Good evening. I'm the chairman of the Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the commission. When the petition or is called, the request in which you're interested in, please come forward to the podium. Give your name and address to the secretary for the record. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. This meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, approval, recommendations on all petitions made by the commission and then forwarded to the city council. Are there any questions? If not, the secretary will call the roll.
Commissioner Bland is excused. Commissioner Faust.
Present.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Mellon.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Orange.
Here.
Commissioner Oster.
Here.
Chairman, you have a forum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from September 24th meeting, 2024. I will entertain a motion for that approval.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes from September 24th, 2024, with any necessary corrections.
All seconded.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any corrections or discussion among the commissioners? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item is the approval of tonight's agenda. You've all received a copy of that. It's been publicly posted. I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So I move more.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve tonight's agenda. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Brings us to new business. Tonight's business is a public hearing. Case number is JPCC 124-001, a rezoning request for 2419 Mackinac from B1 to R3 to accommodate a proposed daycare. I will read the guidelines for a public hearing. This is to allow a change in zoning. The purpose is to address the commission with regard to the subject of the hearing, not other topics. Speaker shall address the remarks to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members, city staff, or their audience, the audience. The applicant's applications, the subject of the hearing, or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case?
Yes, I would like to.
I recognize you as the principal representative, then. Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Betty Nash. My address is 1702 South Hamilton Street, Saginaw, Michigan, 48602.
All right. You may present your request.
Yes, I would like to request that 2419 Mackinac Street be rezoned to our zone. I locally have a daycare center right now, and it's at 1702 South Hamilton Street. It's in my home, but I'm looking to expand that because I just recently retired from Saginaw Intermediate School District. I've been there for 29 years. My whole background been education. I have associate, a bachelor, and a master's degree in education. And I'm looking forward to expanding my territory in my daycare. This has been a dream for me. Once I retire, I just always want to own my own business. And I'm just looking forward to trying to expand. And I feel like being in that area, I could bring more to that community. My purpose of why I do what I do is because I love helping families and children. The name of my daycare is Help Save Our Children, and that goes back to way back years ago where we had Boys and Girls Club, and some of those Boys and Girls Club ended up closing down. And I always felt like if people use that for actually babysitting, because they, parents, they, they at work. They work long hours. That's an after-school program, so sometimes they need that help to provide service for their children while they still at work. So I felt like if the daycare, if, excuse me, not the daycare, but if Boys and Girls Club closed down, then what would the children have? You know, where would they go? There's only two things for them to do, that's be in the streets or be in jail, get in trouble, because they have nowhere to go. So that's why I focus on Help Save Our Children, because I felt like our children are our future. So with that being said, I ended up opening up a daycare myself as my second job, doing second shift and third shift. Because third shift, a lot of young parents really don't have anybody to care for their children. And I felt like with all my experience that I had, that I could provide that service for them. Right now, my program is a five-star. It's validated by the state of Michigan. I just recently had an interview in August by Early Childhood Investment Corporation out of Lansing, Michigan, and they did a huge article on my daycare, because within this year of me being in my daycare, I got validated and got the five-star system. I provide emotional foundation of early learning, which is called CCEFL, focusing on social and emotional development and school readiness goal. The models of the foundation is grounded for positive supportive relationship between teachers, children, and the peers and the family. During the pandemic, as we know, a lot of kids, parents, all had to stay in the house because of the pandemic, and it caused like a lot of social, emotional issues, not just, you know, in the homes, but everywhere in the United States, period. You know, being stuck in the house, can't go nowhere, that can become like a real mental issue. And so I had to focus a lot on that, because in my daycare right now, I have a lot of children with like IEPs. And so I, me and the parents get together, they give me a copy of the IEPs, and I work with them and their childrens. I get progress reports, I give nutrition meals, and again, I am 24 hours. So with that being said, I just asked if I can expand my daycare by being rezoned in the 2419 Mackinac area. I have got out, I went and talked to neighbors, seeing was anybody in that neighborhood interested in a childcare, being in that area. And I did get a lot of feedback, met a lot of younger people who had kids and was interested in signing their kids up. So with that being said, I hope you take into consideration that a daycare is needed in that area, and I hope you can come to the conclusion of making sure that the zone is rezoned. And I would like to just share, if I can approach, just a copy of the interview. You don't have to look at it now, because I know we only have a story. None of the time, but whenever you get time.
Thank you.
This is just who I am, what I do for our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
So with that being said, if anybody got any questions for me, I'm willing to answer anything.
Not at this time. We would ask if anyone else wishes to comment on this. Thank you for your presentation. Does anyone else wish to comment during the public hearing on this proposed zoning Anyone else?
I have one letter that I received.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you present that for the record?
This comes from Mary Ellen Fryer. Dear Saginaw Planning Commission, not that I'm against the small business owner, however, I'm against rezoning the property for reasons stated on the public hearing notice. I've lived in, on Thurman Street since 2005. I drive to work down Thurman to Mackinac east Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. I praise the new roadway and no parking signs along Mackinac as it makes my commute smoother and safer. However, that time in the AM, I have people running up behind me, pushing me to increase my speed. There's a 25 mile per hour speed limit, and I can guarantee your, you individuals rushing to get their children to and fro to the childcare center will surely disobey the limit. Bringing more traffic at the intersection of Thurman and Mackinac will cause accidents. There will be trouble as individuals use Thurman as a cut-through between Brockway and Mackinac with speeds often reaching 70 miles an hour and never the speed limit. I see this mostly on weekends and as I return home from work, as I am not normally home during the daytime. One of the ingress egress drives on Thurman very close to Cooley's ingress and egress that is very close to the corner of Mackinac. This is an accident waiting to happen, and children will be hurt as many are not fastened in their seat properly. In the AM hours during school time, buses and traffic run up and down these streets and again when picking up later. After work, I drive up to traffic coming through Thurman and Graham, pulling in and out of Cooley's to pick up their party store items that time of day. Let's discuss the childcare center. Most have outside activities, which include walking children outside. I don't walk my dog outside due to the amount of loss of loose dogs wandering in the area and with drug-laden riffraff walking up and down. Thurman and Mackinac to Cooley's can be frightening, as more houses are being purchased as rentals in this area, which is ruining a once-clean owner-occupied neighborhood. In generating tax dollars, if generating tax dollars is a driving force behind rezoning for the business, how about collecting from those who don't pay but are allowed to keep purchasing properties in the city and renting them out? I pray to God a pot shop, if zoning is ever appropriate, won't be allowed to go into that location eventually. And that's it.
Is there any other comment from anyone present? That's the only one we got?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
What? It's moved and supported to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this point, we will be entertaining a motion to approve the petitioner's request to rezone 2419 Mackinac from current zoning B1, local business, to R3, medium-density residential to accommodate a proposed childcare center.
I don't have a question. I think I might have missed that one.
Well, we're not discussing it yet. Is there anyone to make a motion to?
So moved.
Approve the request? It's been moved to approve the request. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Orange, second. At this time, then, we can have discussion on that approval. Commissioner Orange.
Now I can ask my question. Ms. Nash.
You have to, if you're going to ask her a question, you would have to go out of regular, vote to go out of regular agenda.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion if we come out of regular session to entertain questions.
It's been moved to go out of regular order, so we may have questions for the petitioner. That's supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Commissioner Orange, you may address your question to the petitioner.
I have two questions. What age range do you serve?
Zero to 13 years old.
Okay. And will the drop-off and pickup be located in the back of the building or in the front?
Well, the drop-off, okay. The drop-off will, will be coming off of Mackinac. So it's two different driveways. So off of Mackinac, that will be a one-way entrance. So they will only be able to drop off right there, and that's by the door, but they will not be able to come in that way.
Okay. That's it. Thanks.
I'm talking about like if they was coming off the other street, off of Thurman, they will not be able to go back out that way.
Okay. Okay. That was it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
How many children will you have at that location?
Will I?
How many will you be licensed for?
Well, I wouldn't know until the license come in. The license consultant have to come in, and they license you by space.
What are you asking for?
I'm asking for at least 20 kids per shift.
Okay.
Just to start off with, because like right now, I'm at six.
Oh.
So I'm looking to expand.
So this will be 24 hours still?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I have some questions about the fencing. Some of the fencing that's there currently is not in the best of condition. Are you going to replace that?
I'm gonna replace the fence around the front of the building and the clothes off the driveway on both sides.
Okay.
And I'm also gonna take a fence up the side of the building where the store is. I already consulted with my license, with license consultant, and she actually told me what I needed to do.
And then for the play area, how, how high is that fence going to be?
Like, maybe like a six foot.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Nash, what is a five-five program?
A five-five?
Did you say something about the different stuff you were certified for? And you said, I thought you said five-five.
The five-star.
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 I heard five.
Okay. That's a rating. You know, like programs have a one-star, two-star, three-star, four-star, so I'm at a five-star.
Okay.
And it's because, not only just because of my credentials, but I got, I had a validation. They came in and done a class observation on me to make sure that I was doing the things that I needed to be doing to educate the kids. And so I got validated for that, and it's every two years. So once my two years is up, they'll come back in and they'll observe me to see if I can pass the class again.
Okay. Okay. I just heard five. I thought you said five and five. Okay, five stars, even better.
Yes. And the five-star rating just prove that your program is excellent.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes, thank you. How many do you anticipate, how many drop-offs do you anticipate to be occurring at any given time?
How many drop-offs?
Let me, let me ask a different question first. Are you going to have set hours for families to bring their children and then, you know, a four-hour period or a 12-hour period? What is, well, how is your setup, since you're saying it's gonna be 24 hours?
So it depends on if the parents have first shift, second shift, third shift.
What, what are you describing as shifts?
Well, some people have to be at work at 6 o'clock, some people have to be at work at 7 o'clock. So they don't normally come at the same time. I have drop-off at 8 o'clock. I have drop-off from 3:30, parents pick up at 11:57. Some parents pick up at 10 o'clock. They don't always drop off at the same time, and they don't always pick up at the same time.
I'm, the reason I'm asking is there really isn't a lot of space for cars to back up on the drive off of Mackinac if you've got five or six people dropping off at the same time. I am concerned whether there would be people backed up onto Mackinac waiting to get into the driveway. And that would depend on the number of people dropping off and picking up at one time. Have you any way to space people for that?
Well, we have space out there, but I can't say if everybody gonna come at the same time, because I have six kids right now, and they don't even come at the same time.
Well, I understand they may not, but what happens if you have someone? I assume the main time will be in the daytime, and you would normally, you said about 6 to 8 o'clock in the morning, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And is, if you have 10 people dropping off at that time, that becomes a potential hazard on, on Mackinac. And I guess I'm asking, how do you plan on dealing with that situation?
I mean, I would have to direct it, direct the traffic if I need to, but like I said, I never just really had a person come at the same time. And if so, I mean, it's plenty of space that's back there. If you get two or three or four that comes at the same time, I mean, it's a big parking lot.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very familiar with this area. I was all over this during the election, and you can see the traffic. I mean, there's traffic on the street, but there's not a lot, even in the, even in the 3 o'clock hour. And I can see you have, you can get four cars on the side of your building very easily. And then looking at the diagram here, you can put quite a few cars in the parking lot back there, so I don't have a concern.
Okay, thank you.
And looking at the street, right now, I'm looking at it on Google Maps, between the 7-Eleven, you could put one car there, you could have four parked there. You have four on the side of your building, you can put six in back.
Yes, sir.
And then route them back out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I, I don't see a problem here, commissioners.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Moore, did you have any additional question?
Uh-uh. You said.
I have a question for Mr. Golin. We are concerned today with a zoning request.
Yes.
This would be a change of use. Will there be a separate site approval?
No.
For this?
No.
Okay.
They, they meet all the zoning requirements.
So if it meets it under the zoning, there won't be?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question for staff as well, Mr. Golin.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
The only parts of the area that will be rezoned, as I read this, is the subject property, is that correct?
Correct. It would be an expansion, because there's the west, whatever, the name of the apartment complex there to the southeast.
Well, that raises to me the question of an orphan area of zoning, because part of the Mackinac Heights Apartments apparently is currently B1, correct?
Yeah, it's, so the way that ordinance reads is that if the majority of the property is one zone and, and the zoning, I guess, goes across and impedes on that particular, it's really zoned for what the majority is. Same way with this particular subject property, you can see that it's really split zone, but the majority of that property and what the use is intended for would encompass that the area that is zoned currently R3.
If the R3 area of the subject property, that would remain, and the rest of that subject property would be converted to B1 if this was passed, correct?
It would be converted to R3.
I'm sorry, yes, from B1 to R3.
Yes.
Well, what, I, I still am not clear if the, the area of Mackinac Heights Apartment, and indeed part of R3, a very tiny part, excuse me, Lot 1212 of Thurman, would technically still be zoned B1. I mean, using it maybe wouldn't matter, but it still would be zoned that way. Why are we just asked to zone, to correct the zoning for those other areas as well, instead of just, instead of orphaning some portions?
It wouldn't be orphaned, we would just encompass all of that.
So the request, the proposed ordinance doesn't do that, though, I don't believe. It looks like it just covers the subject property. So how would you do that?
I'm not sure how we would, I mean, the Mackinac Heights Apartments really are zoned R3, and so by changing the ordinance, we would just rezone all of that area R3 to encompass all of that, leaving Cooley's corner B1.
So even though the proposed ordinance amendment doesn't include that, you're saying it would just, my fiat be changed? I, I don't know how you could do that with your heaven ordinance.
Well, because I, I don't have the description of the, this parcel that, you know, that per, that you're talking about. I don't have a description for that to begin with.
I, I understand that, and I guess that's, to me, is leaving it orphaned.
I don't know how this was developed, but that's the way it is, and so I'm assuming, and maybe it's a bad assumption on my part, but I'm assuming then that the property in question that we're rezoning is currently zoned B1, because the majority of it is B1, and Mackinac Heights is R3, because the, a majority is. And so when we do the rezoning, what I would do is probably just encompass all of that, because I, there's no way I can just, I don't even know where that line is to begin with.
Just seems a strange way of doing business, if that's what's happening.
There are so many parcels in this city that are split zoned like that, that I, I don't know how, I don't know how it was done in the first place that way, and, and so.
And ultimately, everything's gonna be corrected through this zoning ordinance process, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I hope so, because it really, from a ordinance standpoint, it will be orphaned from, from strictly ordinance, because everything here is done by ordinance. So I, I guess I would have much preferred that any of the corrections were made now, but, okay.
Are you worried about that piece?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not worried about it, I'm just saying that's not, you have a, you have, this is an ordinance, this is created by ordinance, the current B1 area. If you only change part of it, the rest... If you only change part of it, the rest stays B1. The Cooley's Corner is gonna stay B1 because it's not being changed.
Right. And that's not, that's not what the ordinance is saying. It's not changing Cooley's or.
I know. I, I agree. What isn't being changed by this particular ordinance proposal remains B1.
Yeah, there's still that other little parcel.
So it's just, it, it's, it's a messy way to do business. If that's what's going.
Well, it was a messy system to begin with because again, I, I have no way of knowing what the dimensions of that orphaned piece are.
I, I understand the problem.
I, I think, I mean fundamentally, you're talking about areas that are outside of the property that is subject of the application.
Right.
What's going on with the property of the subject app, of the application in whatever decision you make and then ultimately council makes doesn't affect the use of those other properties that you're concerned with. Mackinac Heights is still gonna continue to be zoned under R3. And again, the entire zoning ordinance is going through a rewrite process, which is going to provide a brand new map for the city of Saginaw. So I think the concerns that you're raising are ultimately going to be addressed for every parcel in this situation for the city and that's going to get cleared up through this rewrite.
You may be right, but I want to ask another question. Is that orphan type of zoning going to be corrected and go, follow property lines after this in the, in the amended zoning ordinance when it's done?
It should be.
But at this point, that isn't being addressed directly is what I'm hearing, correct?
Because.
Well, we'll make a re-attempt to do it that way.
Yeah, okay. I, I, 'cause I, I mean, if we're gonna get it corrected, it's gotta be corrected in some way.
Yeah.
Properly with an ordinance because this is all done by ordinance. Okay. And we, you know, we're charged as a planning commission with getting a zoning ordinance that works.
Yes.
So we can't have these orphan areas.
No, I, I totally agree. It's, and it's difficult to interpret sometimes.
Yeah.
Even just trying to advise people who are interested in changing some of this.
I mean, I certainly understand Mackinac Heights Apartments will remain an R3 in the sense of, you know, that's what it is.
The use, yeah.
The use, but, but you have an ordinance that says otherwise for that little section. That's where I'm coming from. It needs to be corrected. If it will be good, okay.
There's, there's even R1 wrapped around it.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it's crazy. All right. Mr. Moore, did you have a question?
I, I, our attorney answered it.
Okay.
When the process of changing a lot of things, they were all scattered brain. And so when we talk about this, yeah, I understand what you're saying too, Commissioner Clark, but it's changing. Everything's changing. And at the end of the day, R3 is gonna be the B1, the B1 would be R3 and the B, the B1 for the grocery store is gonna, and probably be it too. Well, no, because it's a store. So I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, she answered the question I wanted to ask and Calson Man, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ostas, when he said about the cars, that was the question I wanted to ask, how many cars can get in that lot? Now everywhere Saginaw is zoned different everywhere, all across on the east side as well as the west. So are we looking at rezoning? I know that we keep saying, are we moving on this to where we can get stuff to where everybody can be comfortable?
Yes.
Are we moving on it?
Yeah, we are. We're halfway through it or more.
Okay.
So the parking lot holds 10 cars as it is now.
I know.
Or 20 actually. And, but with the proposed playground, we would take out 10 of those. Um, and then as Commissioner Ostas has pointed out, you're gonna have a stacking of cars as they're coming in off of Mackinac.
We had the same thing at high school, at the middle school. I mean, you got the same thing in not just this daycare, it all day cares.
Yeah.
You gotta back up at a certain time. There's nothing you can do about it. All you gonna do is, is be frustrated and if you run it late like we do, it's gonna be all another problem. So, okay, thanks.
Go watch him come into Thompson.
Mr. Goldwyn, um, I'm looking at some of the dimensional data. 1,280 square feet of usable space. Is that split between the two floors? Is it 600 and some on each floor or?
So some of the parking regulations talk about gross floor area and some talk about usable. So that's what was determined here is there's usable gro, um, floor area of whatever is on that report.
Okay, so simply trying to look at the photos of the building or the dimensions, there might be staircases.
Yes.
Other things that are removing from usable space.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it, it's an odd shaped building to start with. All right. Uh, any other questions for the petitioner while we were out of regular order? I will entertain a motion to return to regular order.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Back to the original motion about approval for the zoning change. Does any commissioner have discussion on the original motion of approving the zoning request, rezoning request? Mr. Ostas?
Just a comment, comment on the letter that you wrote, uh, 'cause they were addressing Thurman Street. You are not gonna drive 70 miles an hour down Thurman, trust me.
Okay.
Okay? Been down that street many times. Um, actually got that one on the list for a Pacer study to be looked at for repair. So that was my comment on Thurman Street. The other thing too, they referenced marijuana facility. I think we haven't seen a marijuana facility application here in two years and that's a special use permit, no matter how the city's owned. So I wanna, for the record, let's address that. Um, and Thurman Street is down around the corner from this. Okay. Um, other than that, that's really, I, all I wanted to address from the letter that came in from our, from our resident.
Any other discussion of the original motion? Commissioner Clark?
Yes, thank you. Just to sort of follow up, you, you got the letter. Was any, was, was anything done to look at any of the issues she, the letter writer wrote before coming to the, to the commissioner or it just was received and, and just read to us and that's all?
I did not complete a traffic study of that area.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I, I just was wondering if there's anything done to follow up, but not, okay.
No, other than, I mean, I parked over there and just kind of sat in the parking lot and observed, but I didn't see anything.
And so that didn't raise any concerns for you either?
No.
All right, thank you.
Any other commissioners' comments? Then we will proceed to the motion. All those in favor of approving the zoning change from B1 to R3 for 2419 Mackinac, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is the time for anyone to make public comment to the commissioners generally about any issue, not necessarily tonight's issue. Seeing no public comment, do we have any old business? Any reports we're lacking or need to prepare? Old business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.